Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the October 1st, 2020 Meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
I'll bow with us. Lord, we want to thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon this community. I guess that you look over us this evening, look over all of our partners that are out there looking out for us here. Give us wisdom this evening, all these matters. Best thing for this community.
Your allegiance, thy life, in the space of America, to the Republic, one nation, God, the visible, whatever it is that has problems.
Thank you, be seated. If I could remind you, please silence your cellphones. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for a full quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from the September 17th meeting. If there are no additions or amendments to those minutes, I need a motion for approval.
I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to examine the agenda tonight. I believe we do need to amend one item. Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, to remove item 2A1, the massage operator's license, and make a motion to approve with the removed item.
Okay, with that one change, gentlemen, are there any other changes? If not, I need a motion for approval as amended.
I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to amend the agenda passes five zero. We have a couple ladies tonight that are going to give us an update on our Vision 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and this will be a public hearing. Mr. Sterling, would you like to say anything about the process before?
Sure.
Or introduce the young ladies?
No, I'll just mention that, you know, we've been working on this since early February. You know, we've had a lot of public hearing to date, even through the COVID pandemic. So, you know, we've got a lot of good public feedback as a result of that, and I think we're, you know, we're in the process of working on the plan update itself and the document should be ready hopefully in the next couple of months to vet with our steering committee and public organizations. So I think we'll have something ready hopefully first of the year for review and adoption. But with that, I'll let Courtney do most of the heavy lifting.
Okay, and if you'd give us your name and home address, and the vice chair's running the clock, you've got two and a half hours.
Okay. All right, everyone, buckle in. So my name is Courtney Reich. I'm with Goodwin Mills in K-wood. We are consultants that were hired to assist your county planning staff with the update of the Vision 2035 Plan. And I guess I'm not advancing slides. Great. Yeah, you can if you want. Okay, yeah. So I'm here today to give you an update on the public input we've had through this process. So we've pretty much at this point completed the line share of the public engagement and community feedback process, and so we wanted to come back to you and share some of the findings that we made during this process. You can see the slide here shows you where we are in this process. We started off by gathering data, had a comprehensive public involvement process. Like Scott said, it was a little bit of a challenge because COVID hit right after we started. I think our first meeting might have been March 6th, and then that was pretty much the last normal meeting we had, but we did our best, and the steering committee really came through and participated in a lot of meetings that weren't in an ideal situation. And we had a lot of participation in some of our online activity, more so than we would have otherwise expected, so that was a good result. Our public involvement in process, as it was amended, included these things. So we had five steering committee meetings and a community, online community survey. And in fact, I say online community survey, but there was an opportunity to take it hard copy as well if you needed to. But we had over 1,000 people respond to that survey, which is great, great data. We had two open house workshops that we held related to the development strategy, and we are going to have three public hearings about this process. This is public hearing number two of a final public hearing after we present a draft plan and its quality. This just shows you the, a more detailed schedule that outlines when all of these meetings happened, but we've been having steering committee meetings throughout this process, and interspersed with that, we've had some of these other elements. This is the future schedule, starting with today's date, the public hearing on October 1st. We'll have two more steering committee meetings after this, this particular public hearing. We're going to use these steering committee meetings to help us refine the actual planning document, which is where, now that we've finished the public engagement, we're going to start actually writing the plan update. We'll be presenting that to the steering committee. Once we've got that all in a, in a complete draft form, then we'll make that available for public review early next year, at which point there'll be another public hearing so we can gather general public input. And then once we have incorporated that input, then we'll be presenting it back to the steering committee and of course, the Board of Comis-, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. They can decide what they would like to do in terms of DCA updates. Want to talk to you first about our steering committee, which has been very engaged, very active throughout this process. Included, the overall steering committee process will include eight steering meeting, eight meetings. There were four at-large members. These were all appointed by the Board of Commissioners, of course, and then there was members that were appointed from each district. And then we also had representatives from different local organizations. In fact, 18 of the folks on our steering committee represent area, and you can see those, the list of those organizations on the right side of the slide there. One of the first things we did with the steering committee was a SWOT analysis. I'm sure you've all been through this type of an exercise before, where you identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And you use this information to help develop your vision and your goals and strategies as it relates to your plan. And you can see here, this is the results of that steering committee SWOT analysis, some of the strengths they identified, and some of the opportunities, as well as weaknesses and threats that we needed to avoid. One of the tools that we used since we had to do a lot of our meetings virtually was something called Poll Everywhere. I don't know if you've ever been at a meeting where you got to use your cellphone to answer survey questions. So we did a lot of that as we were engaging with the steering committee online during these meetings. And this is one of the items, or one of the questions that we asked them to give us their results for, which was what, describe, pick a word to describe the future you want to see for Columbia County. And you can see here, it creates what we call this word art, and the more, the more frequently that word was submitted, the larger that word is. So you can see here, this is really a visual way to talk about vision in terms of talking about forward-thinking, progressive growth, having a successful community, all of these different words, words that the steering committee used about the vision. The steering committee helped us put together a survey, you asked the, the community at large, questions about the vision, questions about the existing plan, things they wanted to see, like they didn't like. They helped us put together those questions, and then we put that out online. It was available for about two months online, and like I said, we had over 1,000 people respond, 90%, 7% of which lived in the county. You can see the districts break down there. It was, you know, we got results from every district. It was somewhat evenly broken up, maybe District 2 had a little bit less. You can see also that we had a pretty good results from people of different age groups, and almost everybody that answered lived in the county for six or more years. So people who had experience and an understanding of what it means to live in Columbia. These are the top three reasons that people in this community survey identified as why they live here. The quality, the pace of life, quality of the school, and the general aesthetics and attractiveness of the county were the top three reasons identified. These are the highest priority issues of concern that were identified within the survey, and that included managing the growth, being one of the fastest-growing communities in the Southeast. Certainly managing that growth was obviously a top concern. Having standards and guidelines for future development, the traffic, probably that's not news to anybody, guidelines and standards, again, for both residential and commercial, the road construction, recruiting the types of small businesses and retaining those small businesses that people want to see in those areas of the community that they're living in. Green space preservation was obviously a very top priority, not only in the survey, but also within steering committee. Job creation and employment, greenways and trails, recreational parks, broadband internet access and making that universally available throughout the county, and restaurant and retail development. One of the questions asked, one of the questions asked if people were satisfied with various public services that the county provides. And you can see here, the number of people that responded that they were satisfied with these services. So from order of being highly satisfied all the way down to not being so satisfied, you can see how people felt about these public services. And by and large, people are generally satisfied with the services they get from Columbia County. More than half of these items that we asked people about, more than half of the respondents were satisfied with that service. Of course, the parks and the cleanliness of public spaces were highly, people were highly satisfied with that, as well as a lot of the public safety. The police and fire also got high ratings. Then of course, traffic congestion, something people were not satisfied with. We did have a workshop that was related to development patterns, and we held it twice. And when I say we had two workshops, they both touched on this subject of development patterns and future land uses and what people wanted to see, which is obviously of interest to you as the planning commission. And we had, they, we had one meeting here in this room, and then another meeting at the, what is it called, the Exhibition Center. Thank you. And invited people to come in, and they, we had, at these workshops, anyone from the public who wanted to attend could visit various stations that talked about different character areas within the county. So we had, they were on the same week. People could attend either one. We tried to keep them, have them in different areas so that people had opportunities to go to one that was close to them, or one that was at a convenient, on a convenient day. You could also interact because of COVID. We didn't want to have people necessarily, we felt that people might not be comfortable touching various things within these stations, so we had a way for you to interact with these stations online, so you could use your phone and answer questions about maps that we had up at these various stations. And we had about 60 people attended in person, but we had that same survey available online so that people wanted to virtually attend, and 284 people virtually attended these workshops. These are the different stations that we had, talking about open space, talking about rural areas, rural neighborhoods, more urban neighborhoods, the community crossroads, the activity centers, the corridors, and then we had an eighth one, just about general development patterns. So here are some of the buzzwords we received. We asked people just for general comments. They could provide a comment card or provide comments via the online app, and you can see here, these were some of the top responses we got from people who participated, people identifying where they might want a new park or playground, looking for areas where there's walkability in sidewalks, grocery stores, having grocery stores closer to their, they lived, interest in trails and recreational facilities, and other forms of connectivity. We had a lot of Trader Joe's requests, which we also, pretty much anywhere I work, you get, you get some requests for Trader Joe's, and then talk about a trolley system. We did ask people what types of property should count towards the green space goal. I'm sure that you're aware that the county has in their last plan, the Vision 2035, has a 20% green space goal. So we asked people what types of property should count towards that 20%. And of course, natural undeveloped areas that are publicly owned are obvious choices. They also felt that active parkland and natural undeveloped areas that are privately owned but have some type of permanent protection should also count. Not, less than half of the folks that responded felt that floodplains should count towards that goal. Generally privately-owned areas that don't have any type of permanent protection or ag lands, not ranked very high in that question. You can see here, we asked people about their thoughts on the rural areas. These are not the rural neighborhoods, but the rural areas. Most of the people that responded felt that lot sizes should be 2.5 acres or higher, 2.5 being your minimum size. That allow, that they felt that dog kennels and other veterinary and veterinarian related would be allowable, but not contractors' offices. In rural neighborhoods, people felt that sewer service could be provided, but they still wanted lots to remain at one acre and above. Right now, you know, having sewer service, lot size is less than an acre. People felt that in rural neighborhoods, lot sizes should stay at an acre. And that 41% felt that rural neighborhood area where you have one acre lot minimums as opposed to 2.5 should be expanded to the west. General neighborhoods, a lot of people, again, we heard this a lot, sidewalk and trail connectivity, looking for those facilities, whether there are new, new neighborhoods or retrofitting them to old neighborhoods that don't have that kind of connectivity. Everybody was very interested in green space preservation, but not as many people were interested in giving up their own land towards green space. And that just about 50/50% felt that neighborhood areas should be for single-family homes only, allowing other types of. At the community crossroads, and these are the, the little commercial areas that are at the crossroads of major thoroughfares in the rural areas, people, people agree that it might be time to look at developing plans for some of them, not all at once, but looking at what kinds of development are going in those areas and putting some thought into what we want to see in those areas, allowing it to just happen organically. But that at those areas, any kind of future development really shouldn't be any more intense than some type of professional office or small-scale neighborhood uses. In the larger activity centers, people were concerned about some types of more intense land uses not being allowed, but that, and they also felt that it'd allow for other types of multi, multifamily residential outside of the Evans, Martinez, and Gateway area. And then less warehousing. We also looked at road corridors, so not everything was a land use area, but there were, we did discuss the actual roadway corridors and what people felt were appropriate, what corridors were important to identify and have that discussion about. Bel Air Road, the issues of what types of land uses on that road, looked at, you know, that it really should be office use and professional only with some residential, that that would be inappropriate in that neighborhood area. Looking at Gordon Highways, the potential for employment in the corridor that would have some light industrial, and extending that all the way to the county line. That we still, what we heard from the communities, they still believe that there was potential in that corridor to serve that purpose. Riverwatch and being, was added as a corridor that would allow commercial and professional uses along it, as was Furries Ferry. And again, that would also allow other types of commercial. But this is the process that we're engaged in now. We've heard from the community, and all of these needs and opportunities that people have talked about are going to feed what you see here, which is how the community vision is laid out. We have overarching themes related to development strategies, governmental coordination, and those themes translate into goals, which translate into strategies that address what we've heard from the community, opportunities. Each of the strategies that we identify in turn become an action item that's in the work plan, and the work plan is really where the rubber meets the road with your comprehensive plan. So that's going to have a specific list of, I have a slide here, yeah. So the community work program, that's where all the strategies are addressed, and each strategy is going to have an implementation item. And it's going to have a specific timeframe that we're going to give, a schedule for its implementation, identify who the responsible party is to see that through, what the potential cost might be, and what that funding source might be if the cost is something beyond just staff time. We also are going to be doing a report of accomplishments. So the next time we come back to a public hearing, we'll be able to share the results of this. This is looking at the community work program that was done when the Vision 2035 Plan was first completed five years ago. So in that plan, there were action items that you'll need to go back and review and see where we're at with those. Are they things that we've completed? Is it something that needs to carry over into this planning process, or is it something that we just need to get rid of because it no longer aligns with the county's goals? We are in the process of also going through that. Moving forward from now, this is the, the process, so in order to get the plan approved. So we are going to work internally with the staff and the steering committee, and we're going to develop a plan, and that draft plan will be available on the website for public comment by February 1st of 2021, 2021. And we'll have a public hearing to get the public's feedback on what they've thought about the draft plan in early March, and then we will present it to the Board of Commissioners in March. This is the current schedule. Obviously, this can be subject to change if something happens, but right now, this is what we're anticipating. Once the Board of Commissioners gives us the okay to submit it, it'll be submitted to the Department of Community Affairs and your regional commission, and they will provide comments back to us. And those might be minor comments, which we can choose to address or not address, or if they're major comments, then we need to address those. And then that plan needs to be resubmitted to DCA for final approval by June 30th of 20, that should say 2021. And once you've resubmitted it, then it becomes final, and then the county commission or the, would need to adopt it as a final plan at that point. So with that, if anybody has any questions, and if you have any, because we have public folks here and it's a public hearing, if anyone in the public has comments that they would like to provide in written format, this is your information to do so.
Gentlemen, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Courtney. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to add anything to what Courtney's presented to us tonight? I know we've got a number of committee members here tonight. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And does this take a vote to approve to the next level, or do we just close the public hearing? Okay, all right, thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioner's for final action on October 20th, 2020, in these chambers at 6:00 PM. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll give you a request to speak for them. Some of you've been to these meetings, some of you haven't, we're less formal in this body. If you'd like to, in our one public hearing we have tonight, or if we ask you to come up to the, to the microphone today, take three to five minutes to give us your position, either for or against whatever issue you're speaking about, or if you want to come up in the public comments section, I will ask you the same thing, give us your name, address, and take three to five minutes to give us your, your, your take on whatever issue you want to speak about. With that being said, we'll move into the first item for tonight. It's tabled from our September 17th meeting, Ms. Bolti, conceptual plan for Tommy Stevenson.
Yes, sir. This was tabled from September 17th. At that time, we didn't have quite all of the information we needed for a complete review. That information has since been submitted. So this is a concept plan for 14 lots off Old Apling Harlem Road and Wrightsboro Road. It's currently zoned RA, residential agricultural, and you can see the property kind of sits in this triangle of three road frontages, so Wrightsboro Road to the south, Old Apling Harlem to the west, and Powell Church Road to the east. This is the aerial of the site. It is an undeveloped property. And the existing conditions map, part of what we were missing was the wetlands and the state waters determination, so that has been submitted and reviewed by our floodplain manager. It does still need ASOE verification, but she's comfortable with what they've submitted, that they can move forward, that this is sufficient for her review. This is 14 lots, primarily accessed from Old Apling Harlem Highway or Powell Church Road. The lots that front on Wrightsboro Road have an access easement across the back, so there will be no new driveways on Wrightsboro Road. These lots will all be on septic systems, so what, part of what we were missing for the health department's review was a Level 3 soil survey. We'd had a Level 2. Health department had indicated that was not sufficient, so this is the Level 3 that was submitted and reviewed by the health department. They did have several conditions that will impact this development as they move forward with building permits and further, further development, but they are comfortable that this concept can move forward. Staff recommends approval with all the interdepartmental comments.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make, excuse me, I make a motion to approve H1A1 with conditions.
Motion has been made to approve with conditions. Do I hear a second for their conditions?
They're not really conditions on the concept plan, they're just comments.
Okay, a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Approved, carries five zero, submitted. All right, Mr. Butler, you're not on the hook tonight for a massage operator's license, so we'll, we'll push that off for later. Ms. Neal, temporary use authorization.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a temporary use authorization at 2369 Pine Ridge Drive on 6.13 acres, currently zoned residential agricultural. This shows the residential agricultural zoning as along with the location off of White Oak Road and Pine Ridge, and this shows the aerial of the site. And this is the location that they're requesting for the RV to be placed. The applicant's requesting a fifth-wheel camper about 40 feet in length to be their primary residence for him and his family, and to the end of his military contract in September of next year, 2021. At that time, he will move him and his family up to Utah for their primary residence. There's two parts to the code that we're looking at with this. One of them is going to be Columbia County Code Section 82-143. That allows a camper to be used for residence for a period not to exceed 14 calendar days in any given year. Therefore, the applicant received a code enforcement violation because they are already staying on, in the camper on this property. It is, the property is owned by friends of the applicant. The other part of the code is Section 54-9, where the planning commission is allowed to authorize the individual, or the applicant to use the temporary use for residential purposes in any circumstances when denial of such would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of his land, or create an undue hardship on the applicant to the extent of injuries or physical, anything that will affect his physical well-being. In this case, there is a permanent residence already on the property in which him and his family can stay in with the people that already live there, which is what he has indicated his intent would be to do if this were to be denied. Therefore, it's not creating any undue hardship for him and his family. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Right. Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
How long has the trailer been on, been used?
They received the code enforcement violation on September 16th. I'm not sure how long before that they were staying there.
And is the applicant building a home or making any kind of improvements?
His, he's building a primary residence in Utah after his military.
The applicant building a home in Columbia County?
No, sir.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so gentlemen, I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to disapprove the temporary use authorization at 2369 Pine Ridge Drive.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to disapprove carries five zero. Ms. Bolti, preliminary plat for Champions Overlook 2.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for the next section in Riverwood. It's four lots off Riverwood Parkway. This is kind of towards the back, behind the gated section. This, the location of the property is on the south side of Riverwood Parkway. And the plan is to create four residential lots, and then two open space lots right on the corner, and then at the end here.
on the corner, and then at the end here. These are larger lots, the minimum lot size of 27,000 square feet and change, and an average lot size over 33,000 square feet. The lots have front setbacks of 50 feet from the right-of-way, and rear setbacks of 50 feet, and side setbacks of seven and a half feet. There is one shared driveway, so there's a total of three access points for the four lots, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. This is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? We'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Champions Overlook Section 2.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Boltie, we're still with you. Preliminary plat for Quaker Knoll Phase 2.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for 68 lots off Wrightsboro Road. This property is on the north side of Wrightsboro Road, just east of Baker Place, and is zoned R2, single-family residential. This is the second and final phase for this property, the portion on the north side of the creek there. This backs up to Tillery Park, which was recently zoned earlier this year. This section includes 68 residential lots with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and an average lot size just over 12,000 square feet. In accordance with the R2 zoning, the minimum setbacks are 55 feet from the center line and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. Sidewalks are provided on both sides of the road, and 5.3 acres of open spaces provided in this section. Combined with what was in Phase 1, that meets the 10% requirement for R2. And staff is recommending approval.
This is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions for staff? We'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Quaker Knoll Phase 2.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, individual plat for the Bethune family.
Thank you. This is a request for an individual plat off Cobham Road. It's 61.59 acres, a portion of 150.16 acre parent tract, currently zoned RA, residential agricultural. There's a location on the property on Cobham Road. Again, this is the far west end of the county, and everything around it is currently zoned RA. For the plat, you have the creation of these five new lots here. They're all a minimum of 15 acres. The reason for that is the property is currently under FLPA, which is Forest Safety Act. That is the minimum lot size they can do. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Not a public hearing, so we need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the individual plat for the Bethune family, five lots off of Cobham Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. And our last item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. Mr. Butler, file RZ 20-0, excuse me, 20-10-01.
This is a request for rezoning from R4 and C2 to S1 off of Washington Road, also 6389 and 6379 Washington Road. Request is to rezone to S1 Special for expansion of existing church. There's a location of the property on the north side of Washington Road, opposite the intersection of Eubank Drive and Washington Road. Again, the current zoning is, you have the two-litre zone, R4, and the one in the middle is a zone of C2, was zoned back in the 80s. And you have R4 to the north. In the south, you have more RA. Here's aerial view of the site, and also the existing site showing the existing church. And then this building here is the one that'll be torn down for the expansion. You got another view of the existing site, and the overall plat showing the three different properties. This is the existing conditions. Again, you have the existing church here, and the building that'll be torn down for the expansion, and also the existing pond. It shows the proposed concept. The concept itself, you're looking at, this building here is about 8,000 square feet, is essentially a fellowship hall, has several uses that are pretty common for a church. You have the existing church here that will remain, and then the proposed gazebo, it could be there in the future, I don't have any timeframe on that. In terms of the building, we do not have any elevations. One of the things that we do have from a staff standpoint is a condition, is to require the elevations come out before you, before it's approved, for the building permit. It does include, from a, within the narrative, does state that they'll have either a stucco or stone front, and it will be a metal building overall. Overall, you do see the building is quite close to Washington Road. That's really our only issue with this request, and water utility also shares those same concerns. There is supposed to be a water line at five feet from the property line, which will require there to be back a minimum of 20 feet from that water line. So we're looking a minimum of 15 feet, according to water utility. Now, there is some, the line may be further away. We don't know exactly where it is currently. So staff does have a condition in regards to that. In terms of, you know, why we don't want a building that close to the road, it is Washington Road, it is an arterial road, that's, we don't allow buildings that close in urban areas. Again, going out to a more rural area does not make a lot of sense to do that. So again, staff does request a condition to move the building. In terms of the future land use map, this is in the rural area. This does allow for civic uses, which a church is, so it fits the character of the future land use map. In terms of the recommendations, staff recommends approval of conditions. Again, you have water utility, which has an upper structure level than 20 feet of the existing water main. Then also, planning on top of that, has a front building setback, actually a minimum of 15 feet from the property line. In a situation where the condition of present water utility requires a larger setback, it shall hold sway over this condition. And also, the building options will be reviewed by the planning commissioner prior to issuing a building permit, and also a combination of the subject parcels within 180 days of approval by the Board of Commissioners. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening? Mr. Quarter? Okay. All right. Great. Please give us your name and home address. We know you, but we need you for the record.
Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering, 842 Sparkleberry Road, 600. I'm the project engineer, and I'd like to explain a little bit about why the church is asking for a zero-foot setback. I realize that's a little bit unusual. Could you go back to the picture of the existing building? The terrain of the site, there's really not anything that you can see here, but Washington Road is way down low, the church property is way up on a hill, and there's a fairly narrow, flat knoll that runs parallel to Washington Road that this existing building sits on. And back at a certain point, it just drops off very quickly. And so, this is really the only flat land that the church has for a building. The existing building is completely serviceable. We met in it. No reason to tear that building down, except that they have nowhere else to build a building other than that. And the reason for the zero-foot setback, with the building that they planned to build at zero-foot setback, the rear left corner is hanging off of the cliff, so to speak, a little bit, that will require some grading work. To push it back an additional 15 feet will require a tremendous amount of fill to be brought in, probably retaining walls. And I think for the church, it becomes a question of budget they can move forward. So I think two of the departments, I think planning is basically echoing concerns from two county departments, and I'd like to speak to both of those individually. The first one is traffic. They've commented that they have concerns that a future right-of-way acquisition on this property would be very, building at the property line. So early on, I spoke with Corbett Rentals. He's the current head of the DOT and Tennell. I talked to him about the project, about the proximity to the property line. His words to me were, he doesn't expect to see a widening of Washington Road in this area again since, in his lifetime. The DOT's only concern is that the building not be built in there right-of-way. He didn't have any opinion on a setback. I asked if he could put that in writing, a letter, email, and apparently, the DOT is not allowed to comment on his own. So I realize it would have been helpful at this meeting if we could have something, taking my word for the conversation. Sunny Jones is here for the church as well. He'll probably come up and speak for just a minute when I'm done, and he essentially has a good conversation. So I don't think realistically that we're going to be seeing a DOT widening project. In fact, the last one, the right-of-way, was taken on the other side of Washington Road because it didn't make sense to go here because of, so if there was another widening, again, most likely it would not. So that brings us to the other concern, which is the water utility. There's a water uti, there was a water line somewhere near the property line, presumably five feet or so. That still needs to be confirmed. Water utility's got a code, says any structure needs to be 20 feet away. My understanding, the concern there is if the water main blows out and there's a structure close to it, that the county would have some liability for any damage that might do a building. I understand that that's a concern, and it could be a concern. I think, you know, the church's position is they'd like to ask for something a little less than 20. I'm not sure that 20 feet from the water line is absolutely necessary. I think this is an extenuating case. You know, maybe a compromise would be, that there could be some discussion with the water utility to possibly negotiate something a little bit less based on conditions. But just summing it up, the challenge for the church is every foot that they have to push the building back from their property line is going to incrementally a significant additional cost for the construction of the building because of the grading and retaining walls. Just to explain that a little bit further with retaining walls, not only does the land drop off steeply, but there is a stormwater pond back there. So even though they own land, they fill out that far, they can only go so far to the pond. I'd be answering.
Gentlemen, any questions?
If it's legally correct, would they entertain the thought of signing a liability release for that water line?
Come forward and give us your name and home address. Thank you, Mr. Quarter.
Sunny Jones. We live at 700 Eubank Lane. Yeah, we'd sign a release. I don't know that that's even legal, but it's just a thought, because the county's not going, the waterworks are not going to want to do anything and accept the liability at the same time, I would not think.
Yeah. And I don't even know that this body would be allowed to go anything outside the code. The commissioners are going to have to do that if so inclined.
We wouldn't be the one to make that decision, but it's an interesting question.
Right. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak either for or against this? Jones, are you there, would you? Absolutely.
We've been in a church here for, would be 34 years, and we're not a mega church, we're a small church. And ever since we built this other sanctuary 20 years ago, we've been having a building fund saving up for this building for an activity center, which we feel like is essential nowadays for the children and the youth and the community. And we believe in the things that are said in Romans 13:8, the old man nothing set for the love him. And then it says also in Luke 14, it says, count the cost. So that's what we're doing, count the cost. So we felt like this was the right time to start, and then we had some questions, come to find out, we're not even doing it right. Correct. And so then we got Bill, wait, he done left me? Got Bill and Blue Water Engineering Services, and they were handling this for us. So we want to do everything right. And when we first started, we went to Central Steel, which is a building company down in Louisville, and we've got that settled. And then we asked Will, and I think Scott Daniels came out, and one other person with the county with the building. We was talking to them, because we want to know, what do we need to do, and how do we need to do it to make this thing right? And we talked to Corbett Rentals also. Corbett, I got no Corbett when they lowered our property 11 feet. And when they lowered it, the water line, we thought was back toward the crest where the hill goes up, but come to find out, it's right at the 75-foot line, and this is a big hindrance to us, because the property that we have is level where that building is. And if we had to do anything else, the other existing, where the property goes down with the erosion and all that, we would, it's eight-foot tall, 20-foot wide, and 60-foot long, which would take a substantial amount of finances, which we're limited. What we're trying to do is what we have now, we can do what we need to do. We just asking for mercy from the Planning Commission to see if we would be able to move some of these barriers or whatever, and if we need to take liability, we'll take the liability. But when I talked to Corbett, he said all he needed was 75 feet. When they did the project that they just finished up a year or so ago, that project took about 17 years to get started before they ever finished it. So probably me in my lifetime, and probably Al in his lifetime, I don't know how, Al, boy, you've been around a long time. But. Hanging tough, bro. Keep it up. But we just thank the Lord what he's doing, and want to grow and start helping not only our church, but the community, and give to children and the youth, and also use it as a fellowship hall. So we just at what y'all have to say, and at your mercy, and what y'all agree with, and go from there.
Right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak on behalf of the project or against the project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ 20-10-01, rezoning the three parcels at 6389, 6379 Washington Road from R4, C2 to S1 4A Church.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
What are the, how hard line is the waterworks? That's not something.
See, that's something we can't, at this level, all we can do is interpret the code.
Right.
That be correct? And it's up to the commissioners to negotiate anything, or to consult with the county attorney and see.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, what I would say is the mercy you're looking for comes from the Board of Commissioners, I believe. We have to follow the code.
Yeah. All right.
Information, if we don't know where the water line is today.
And I think they're going to have to find that, and then decide, you know, what they're willing to work with. And I'm sure they'll work with them somehow, I just don't know what, but at this level, we can't make.
I don't think it warrants a table. I think it just.
Waterworks.
We can't make a.
The waterworks will be able to find it.
Yeah, they should. Yes, sir, this, we're in discussion. That's what we're doing now. We'll throw a recommendation their way, but again, at our level here, we can't go in and negotiate something on behalf of the county, because we're an appointed board, not an elected board. So, so any, anything we say, I don't believe anymore that we can even make a binding decision on much of anything. There are one or two issues that fall to us that are binding, but they, the commissioners appoint each one of us, and we serve as more of a shock absorber to find out, you know, information, because we've got time to dive a little bit deeper than they do. You know, we all work every day, but, you know, we come in, you know, for the huge amount of money that we get paid for this commission, or this position. But, you know, we've all lived in the county a long time, and are trying to do what's right, but we're bound by the code, and we get information. Most of us talk to our appointed commissioner at least once, once a week. I talk to probably every commissioner at least once or twice a week, to keep them up on what we're doing. And they're the ones that can go in and ask questions of the county attorney, because as soon as you ask a question of the county attorney, the clock drops. And they tend to get mad at us if we spend money with the county attorney. But I would suggest that you call district, what, three or four?
Three.
Three? So call Gary Richardson, wear him out, and he'll respond to you. And I wouldn't hesitate to call anybody else you know, and talk to them. But that being said. But that being said, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion to approve is submitted, passes five zero. We have no text amendments tonight, we have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Victor Floyd at 2369 Pine Ridge Drive, and that was earlier disapproved. And there were several points that I wanted to make that was not in the report that you, was presented before you. One of the ones is that the resident in the house, he has Parkinson's, and one of the reasons that we're there is in order to help her out with everything that she needs while her husband works in South Carolina. He's not always able to do that. In addition to that, he's preparing to retire in the next couple of years, and we also agreed to help them improve the things that have gotten in disrepair on that land, increasing that land's ability to sell and move to where her sister is going to be, which is Grove Town. And in addition to that, the benefits to them, there's also many benefits to us as a family being there, myself, my pregnant wife, and three kids. This is making it so that we're able to go forward in our lives and be able to help other people also in a way that we would not be able to financially if we had to move back into a house. We made the investment in the RV and the truck, and it would be a huge difficulty right now to move at this time. In addition to that, we started to make the renovations on the RV that would take a couple months in order to complete, especially with me going into training this next month, that I won't be able to work on it, and it won't be ready to move until at the very earliest, mid-November, beginning of December. While in there, it said that one of the reasons that suggested disapproval was because would be of my intent, my verbal intent, they said, to move into that house. That was stated with the person who gave us the violation, who, while I was exploring the options of finding out that I was in violation of the code, of the possibility of moving into the house, and we explored that possibility, it would not work, having a two-year-old, four-year-old, and six-year-old with, that would stress out. Our neighbor lives in that house and has Parkinson's, and would just decrease her health. That stress makes her have the worst days. And it would also cause problems with them, because we'd have to be a lot more strict with them, and we'd just increase the stress to the point that it would not be worth it. And after discussing with them, that is not an option for us to move into that house. So if we were to be disapproved, in addition to not being able to really move and to find the budget in order to do that because of the obligations I made with the RV and the truck in order to move it, there's the part of being in the school. Moving away from where we are right now, my daughter, who's in pre-K, there are not open slots where we've been able to find for her to go in pre-K. And so she would then be taken from school. My kids also, with the stability that it's provided, take them out in the middle of the school year, and they have to make friends again when we move. We've moved from California to Texas to here now, and cause a really big problem for them in order to get over it, a stress that said specifically physical problems, physical well-being. And while not a direct physical well-being, all of that stress will cause a physical in both our neighbors and in my family, as of all of the other difficulties that.
You had a contract that you'll fulfill your debt to service by end of September next year?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so when you signed up, have you asked your superiors for any favors or for them to relieve you of any obligations that are in your contract?
No, I have not.
Okay, would they? If you asked?
Which obligations are you talking?
I don't know. Haven't seen your contract. Because what we've got here is we've got a contract with the county, and that contract is the code of ordinances in the county. And I hate that you've gone to the expense you have, but the way you need time here, it's.
Well, one thing, we've already voted it, that's the first thing. You should have come up when he offered for some, for comments then. However, you're asking us to break the code that we live by every day, and you should respect that. So we're setting a precedent if we allow you to go do something that we don't allow anybody else to do. And I'm certainly not going to do that, I don't want everybody else feeling, but I'm not doing it.
What I was saying is that there was within that code, because of that physical and undue hardship, those two points in the code.
That hardship has nothing to do with, you never made an effort to make it legal to begin with until you got caught. And that's the reality of it all.
All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate your comments. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion for adjournment. No movement. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn passes five zero at 6:55 PM. Next meeting is Thursday, October 15th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in these chambers.